For the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting where heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 3.1. Ms. Serza, would you take the role, please?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Moving on to item 3.2. Ms. Cook, would you approve the agenda?
I would love to make a motion of an amended agenda, if you don't mind, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to move approval of the agenda with the following addition. After 5.01 citizens' comments, I'd like to add 6.01 information or discussion item for return to learn. And then the proposed agenda items would be 7.01, et cetera, for the remainder of the agenda.
Yes, 6.01.
6.01, return to learn, yep.
Yes. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify why I'm requesting of the board to do this. I understand that Dr. Heron is going to provide a brief update about how we're doing in return to learn in her announcements, but I would just like to ask that those be moved to 6.01, those brief remarks, and just because that's a better opportunity for board members to make remarks or ask questions if they have any.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
I just want to make sure that Dr. Heron and the administration are prepared for that agenda item. I just don't want to get in the habit of board members adding agenda items on the day of the meeting where the administration's not ready and some board members are not equally ready to ask questions.
There is no planned presentation tonight for return to learn, which is why I didn't have it originally on the agenda. I am making some short, very short remarks about the return to learn process and the first week of school in particular in my remarks this evening. I don't know if the board has other questions that may be relevant in a later agenda item.
I'm certain that we have, this is a topic that we can all talk about and have questions relating to. It's just, it's just bad form to add things to the agenda that the administration may not be prepared for and that board members are not prepared for equally. So, okay, I just want to make sure.
Mr. Kelly, if I could clarify, I think some board members were under the impression that it would be on the agenda going forward, like we move financials from consent to action. So until, until we're operational normal, that we would have an opportunity to just highlight that at each meeting.
Yeah, but it was not on the agenda on Friday that I was looking at to prepare for. So, so some of us may not have been equally prepared for the agenda item that was added tonight.
And Madam Chair, I would like to add that I was under the impression that it would be on every agenda from here to the foreseeable future, at least until we're, you know, in path four. But I did, I did express that early, I believe Friday or Saturday when I opened the agenda. So, just to be clear, it wasn't something that came up today from my perspective.
It was from my perspective.
Gotcha. Dr. Beers?
I agree with Mr. Kelly. I would much prefer just to hear from the superintendent in response to mail that she sent out to the board members before having to deal-
Madam Chair.
Before having to deal with it as an agenda item.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Again, I think allowing it to be an agenda item allows for additional conversation if there is some. That doesn't mean that there has to be a conversation, but I think there was an understanding. And the superintendent and I did speak Saturday morning. It was-
But can't we have a discussion after the superintendent makes her announcement or mentions that? Or, I guess I'm-
We can, now that the, as point of order. Now, if we added it as an agenda item, we can have that discussion. If it was not an agenda item, we would not be able to have that discussion.
Right.
So, so adding it as an agenda item allows the discussion and question and answers to take place.
And then to be clear, moving forward, it will be on the agenda-
Right.
Until we're operational normal. Yes, Ms. Young?
Just my question is, could it be an agenda item permanently until this, until we're back at path four? Sounds like it's been addressed. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? So, we have the amended agenda, a second. No further discussion. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Moving on to item 4.1, announcements and superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, September 8th was the first day of school, and it truly was a first, our first day in our new and enhanced remote learning environment. I visited every school last week, and I saw teachers connecting with students and building relationships. That important work is going on regardless whether we are face to face or screen to screen. I also had the opportunity to listen to some morning meetings and watch high school teachers teach concept, concepts in the remote learning environment. And really want to say a big thank you to all of our teachers who are working harder than ever to make this a great experience for our students. We truly appreciate everything they're doing. By 9:15 on the first day of school, more than 9,000 people had signed on to view the platform students and families use to access live instruction, assignments, and resources. As of last Friday, 9,145 tablets and laptops were given out to students, and 726 tech support requests were resolved. Speaking of technology, Mr. Lanners and his incredible team have identified an East Coast source to get additional devices. Some have already arrived and are currently being formatted for distribution to students next week. We plan to deliver laptops to students in grades three through five starting on Monday. This week, just yesterday, we welcomed back 185 students with disabilities to classrooms for in-person learning. The students and teachers were thrilled to be back together again. The desks are a little more spread out than they look in this picture. As you know, social or physical distancing, use of face coverings, and frequent hand washing are essential to reducing the spread of COVID-19. And that is a message you will hear over and over again as we take each step in our return to learn. Next week, additional students will be in schools for individual assessments. Then, on September 28th, some of our English language learners will return to school for in-person instruction. With all of this information, you may be wondering when we plan to transition fully to path two of our return to learn forward WJCC schools plan. I want to assure you that we are working on that now. If you note in the diagram that you're familiar with now, the red dot shows exactly where we are now, which is right in between path one and path two, having taken some steps already. You will recall that path two includes blended learning for students in pre-K through three, two days onsite and three days of remote learning. On path two, students in grades four through 12 continue to participate in remote learning every day. We are monitoring data from the Peninsula Health Department, which fortunately shows that we are in a better place than we were a few months ago. Transmission rates across the peninsula have moved from substantial to moderate. When experiencing moderate transmission as a region, the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education guidance recommends prioritizing in-person instruction for our most vulnerable students. This includes students with disabilities, English learners, and preschool through third grade. So, we are taking a hard look right now at our operational capacity to transition to path two. As we bring students into classrooms, we must consider the number of teachers who cannot teach face to face because of health accommodations. We also need to look at the number of pre-K through grade three teachers who are currently bringing their children into the classrooms as a childcare option. Once we move into path two, when teachers have students in their rooms, that childcare option goes away. We are also in the process of finalizing bus routes for the blended learning days for pre-K through third grade. With all of this in mind, I anticipate that I will update you and your families and staff next week about a date for transition to path two. Please keep in mind that if the health metrics change between next week and the planned date to move to path two, we will always reconsider our options. This is a very fluid situation. I know you understand and support the need for our students and staff's health, safety, and wellness above all else, no matter how much we want to have everyone back in our classrooms full time. Finally, one good bit of news this evening. Mr. Kelly was elected as chair of the New Horizons Board of the New Horizons Regional Education Center for the second year in a row. He was more than ready to hand over the leadership, but his colleagues voted for him to assume this leadership role again for a second year. And this evening, we want to congratulate Mr. Kelly. Madam Chair, that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Congratulations, Mr. Kelly. Moving on to item 5.1, citizens' comments. I believe we have comments from six citizens.
I would like to express my concern of school reopening. I believe that there is a viable way to open schools. We have a handle on the virus. We understand it. It can be safely done for the majority of students, and it must be done. It's imperative. This social distancing can be done. We can do other ways besides this virtual classroom. It's not viable. And I believe that it needs to be reconsidered and open the schools. Thank you.
Dr. Heron, please consider moving into path two before the nine weeks are done. We have seen school districts around the country go back to in-person schools five days a week with full classes as early as July 28th, including all of my kids' cousins in other states. While there have been people from COVID into the schools, they have been, and they've had to shut down for a day or two here and there, and have had to have some students stay home here and there, the schools have not had, on a whole, all classes have COVID, or all schools have outbreaks of COVID and have been able to function almost normally. The masking and sanitation efforts do protect us from COVID, and WJCC schools are doing even more than that with the hybrid model. This is enough to reasonably protect the kids and staff. Please, let's go on to path two. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Coleman. I am 11 years old and was supposed to go to Berkeley this year. Topic of my, topic of my goal, homeschool learning pathways. I don't like being very small. I think it's much fun to learn. It's also hard because it's difficult to be in class. I don't think it will spread COVID-19 in a good school. I think we should go back. We should just wash our hands. It's not hard. We should just do it simply. I want to go back. Thank you.
I am Kelly. I am a James, Morning British City County student. And I'm in the point of Jameson. I would like to see my friends at school, and I don't want to switch on and off a device. Thank you.
Think she goes to Jameson?
Hi, my name is Rochelle Hamilton. I am currently a P A in family practice, as well as a parent. I currently diagnose and treat COVID-19 patients. I'm calling to give my opinion regarding the return to learning pathways. I would like the board to move forward with path two as soon as possible. Virtual learning is not a substitute for in-person learning for elementary students specifically. The current setup poses an enormous risk in increasing the education gap for the students who are highest risk. The scientific data supports returning in person, especially for younger children, while taking the appropriate precautions for teachers. It is irresponsible to continue forced virtual schooling, given our current local COVID data. The risk of long-term education disruption is much larger for these children than the health risk of COVID-19. Thank you for your consideration.
This is Thomas Goddard, the parents of two children at rural Wayne Elementary School. One is first and one is third. I would like to know specific guidelines with details as to reopening or going into the next phase. My wife and I both work full time, and we are also technically essential employees. And the schedule that's outlined is insane. It's a full day's work between the two children in two different grades, elementary school at that, with one who can only read sight words, unable to read instructions for tasks. It was mentioned at one point, people were that you guys did not want to take responsibility for reopenings or responsibility for anything that could happen, but we need you guys to take responsibility. We need you guys to meet more often.
I'd like to thank our citizens for calling in and sharing their thoughts with us. So now, we were moving on to the new 6.1, which is return to learn. Here's an opportunity to, for Dr. Heron to share some additional information that you didn't share during announcements, or cover everything in announcements.
Madam Chair, I don't have any additional information this evening.
Opportunity for board members to share their thoughts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, at the last meeting, I asked about the demographics of the virtual academy, and we had some information about English language learner and special ed. But just recently, Dr. Heron, you shared some information about the free and reduced lunch numbers. If you could just share that with the public, I'd be grateful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Basically, in the virtual academy, 38% of the students are on free and reduced lunch, and that mirrors very closely our overall free and reduced lunch population. We had similar data when it came to special education and English learners as well with the virtual academy.
Thank you. And then also, I wanted to follow up on your comments about where we were on the path. I like the "you are here" red dot. But just to confirm, the motion of that right now is ideally from left to right and moving along the paths, but it doesn't, won't always necessarily be that way. It could be, it could go either direction. Is that correct? So if we move into path two or three or four, it's possible to move to two, back to three or to two. Is that, could you clarify that?
That's absolutely right. I think the paths, we outlined what they would look like at each level, but obviously, we're actually moving between path one and path two right now and are starting to really put things in place for path two based on the data. We can move any direction at any time depending on the data provided by the Virginia Department of Health. We're looking at that data weekly as a group of superintendents in the region, and many school systems are putting exact dates out there, and we're beginning to look at what that might look like for WJCC schools. Obviously, we want to do it safely. We want to do it well. And we'll be even speaking to principals this week again about modeling mask wearing, washing hands, social distancing, and making sure we've everything in place for whatever we do in the next weeks ahead.
And one thing that I was surprised to, pleased but surprised to learn, that the free and reduced lunch numbers were on par with the, in the virtual academy with the school division at large. But it made me wonder, and I'm not asking this question to be answered today, but it did make me wonder about when we do move into paths two and three, what, what meal distribution looks like. Because right now, when everybody's virtual, it's the same for everyone. But when we do have roughly a third of that population in the virtual academy, so roughly 1,000 kids, let's say, at home all year, not coming to school for meals, I just, I'm curious what that's going to look like. So-
We can certainly provide that information. I would anticipate it would look similar to what it looks now, but just for that specific population in the virtual academy. But that's something we'll have to work through and get you the information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
I have two questions. First of all, is there a possibility that we would be moving into path two sooner than the nine weeks?
It's, it's a possibility right now based on the data, and we are looking at everything very closely and hope to make an announcement next week about a possible date.
Very good. The second thing I have is about our students that are getting free and reduced lunch. Are we providing meals for our students that are receiving, that are in the 38%?
At the moment, anyone on free and reduced- At the moment, anyone on free and reduced lunch has the option to get meals at grab-and-go. And just last week, Mr. Snipes and his team started driving meals upon request into neighborhoods so that students could receive meals that way also.
Thank you.
And to date, we've served about 170,000 meals.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Heron, I appreciate the update that you've provided on the return to learn. One thing that was really interesting to me to see was 726 Tech Connect issues resolved, and then, I'm not sure if I called it correctly in the first week, or I don't know if that was the first day or the first week. Could you give us kind of a sense of what those types of issues were? And clearly, that they were resolved is really magnificent. I know that we knew that it was going to go off well, but of course, not without a hitch. And so that hitch was resolved so quickly is excellent. And maybe Mr. Landers is here to speak to that. I'm not sure.
Yes, I'll probably ask Mr. Landers to speak to that. I know certainly a certain percentage were about, you know, basically getting on the system and knowing what, exactly what to do. There's always some basic help needed for those who are not used to the technology, but he can certainly give a better idea of what some of the themes were. Mr. Landers, the question is to do with the types of things we responded to on the Tech Help Desk, the 726 resolved cases, and the sort of things we were solving and helping families with and students with.
Really, just to highlight the great work that your staff do. Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Honestly, they were a little bit across the board, but primarily, it was initial log-on issues. Could have been resetting their network account, their Canvas access, Student View accounts, those type of things predominantly over that first week. There were a lot of questions about getting into Student View, and then from Student View, being able to get into Canvas. So we had, we were very fortunate to have some media systems helping us that are very, very familiar with our systems, that were able to back up our technical personnel on the Tech Connect, and they were able to resolve a majority of those issues. We did have some others where, you know, there were hardware issues, whether it was a bad wireless card, bad keyboard. We immediately provided hot swaps to those students. So it was, it was kind of a mixture.
Thank you. And the only other tech kind of question that I have is, and I won't call out that school division, but there was a data breach, and it seemed to be related to return to learn. Can you talk about, I guess, our division's preparedness for something like that?
We, I believe we are very prepared. We keep an eye on our network security. I believe it was last spring, a year ago this past spring, we installed a new firewall for the division. We keep that patched. We keep it up to date. We download the antivirus files literally every minute of every day. We're a little shorthanded in that area, but we're keeping, we're keeping on top of it. All of our end-user devices also are patched, updated on a regular basis. So we are doing our best, doing our due diligence to try to make sure we're prepared. In the event something does happen, we are constantly backing up our data so that we always have a good snapshot to go back to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Landers.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Kelly?
And Mr. Landers, is there anywhere where you are not shorthanded?
No. Let's, no, sir.
I didn't think so. It's, you and your staff have done a tremendous job in...
Thank you.
...distribution of those tech devices and assisting people getting online. So just want to add to Mr. Dowell's thoughts about the great job you guys are doing. So you talked a little bit about going to school before the nine weeks is up. I don't know if you're prepared to talk about it, or it's something that you're going to come to next week. But one thing that we all have to keep in mind is the transition from where we are now to, to, you know, even K through Three going to school. That is, that is not something that we can wake up tomorrow and say, you know what? I think, I think, I think on Friday, we're going to go to school. So there is going to be a transition there. There's going to be some thought that has to go through that, and that's, that's, I don't know if you're, if you have any comments about that.
Yeah, we're actually looking at the, a lot of the data now. We're looking at the numbers of accommodations that we provided to teachers, especially in K3, that may not be able to teach. We're looking at the number of staff who are bringing students into their classroom now in a virtual setting as a form of childcare that will no longer be available, and looking at the numbers in that, in those age brackets who are doing that. We're looking, we know that when we make the transition, we want to give about three weeks' notice so that families are aware, that teachers are aware, that principals are aware, and we can start to really get ready for the transition. Interestingly, a lot of our teachers are, well, our teachers are required to be there two days a week. Many are actually in four days a week, working in their classrooms already.
Yeah, and so you talked about, you talked about a three-week head start or a warning. That, warning is a bad term, but, you know, tell them that we're, you know, given three weeks of advanced notice that this is what we're looking at, at doing. So other concern I have is support staff, cafeteria workers, bus drivers. You know, we've, we, last week, and I think this week, were furloughing some cafeteria workers. How many of those have to come back, and what type of notice do we have to, to do there?
Yeah, all the logistics, we've, we've been working already towards some of the major transitions that need to take place when we take the next step on the path. We'll be using the rest of this week very focused on all of those issues so that when we do announce, we know that we actually have the ability to make it happen.
Right, and teachers...
Sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
We don't intend to announce a date until all the pieces are in place.
Yeah, because the teachers have to have time to change their curriculum and how they're, what they're doing and how their presentation is from the virtual to an in-person, and the in-person with the restrictions that we're going to have, and there's a lot of work to do there.
It's a huge amount of work. I think one of the great things that happened this summer, thanks again to the work of our curriculum staff and teachers, is that the curriculum, the digital curriculum that was prepared and is ready to use and just needs to be made the teacher's own, that's usable in the virtual environment, but is also a key resource in the face, in the in-person environment. So the same resources are used regardless of where the teaching and learning is taking place.
I'm going to jump off of that for a second, whereas I'm going to go to the teaching profession. And that, one thing I've always advocated for is, is, you know, what we're asking of our teachers. And we may, we may have had that type of curriculum, but we're, the teachers are still doing an awful lot of work to get ready for class every day. And I'm just, I'm concerned of the demands that we're asking of our teachers, and, you know, we have a couple of folks on our personnel agenda today that pulled the ripcord because this wasn't for them. You know, we've got, we've got a lot of teachers out there that are doing a lot of work that, that, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about their, what we're asking of them, you know, their ability to put it down, you know, their ability to step away, because a lot of teachers are working seven days a week and a lot of hours in those seven days a week. So we really need to be concerned and make sure that we're in touch with our teachers, that, that we're not asking them to do too much. So, so jumping back, you know, as we go from, as our numbers begin to go down, as we go from Path One to Path Two, and as we go from September to October and November to December, and we start getting into cold and flu season, I'm very concerned about regression, that people are going to start letting down their guard, that they're going to start to not do the things that have gotten us to where we are now, that we're going to have to regress. So I guess that's just a, it's just a comment for the community to keep the guard up and keep doing what we're doing so that we can keep moving down the path and keep doing this. You know, we, we, there's, the restaurants have tents outside and the parking lots, and that works good in June, July, August, and September, but October and November, that gets a little dicey. And so I'm, I'm just concerned about how the community reacts as we move deeper into the cold and flu season. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. Kelly. Additional comments?
I would just like to share that I certainly appreciate the division and staff's thoughtfulness. And again, I know all of us would prefer that our students are in the classroom, but I think that it is smart to be measured, and rather than flip back and forth multiple times to, to move slowly, methodically, and thoughtfully, and even just from our last meeting, when our community was in substantial positivity rates, we've now moved into, what's the next level, Dr. Heron?
Moderate.
Moderate. So looking at the data, it's, it is moving in our favor, but I think that we do need to be thoughtful and methodical. And then I just want to make it clear for the community that Path Two is hybrid. So that's not five days a week for our youngest students. That is, that's a hybrid. So two days a week in the classroom and three... Unless there are additional comments, we'll move on to 6.2, which is now the appointment of the superintendent's designee to serve through 2020.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like you to consider the appointment of Mr. Daniel Keever to be the superintendent's designee to attend board meetings in my absence and take charge when I'm not available.
Any discussion? Aren't planning anything, are you?
Not yet.
Does this cancel the previous designee that we had?
Yes, sir. With Dr. Murphy leaving, that it was necessary to appoint a new designee to replace me.
And this is an action item for tonight?
Yes, it is.
Yes, sir.
Unless there's additional questions, we'll move on to item 6.3, which is authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this is an item that's brought back to you. It came before with Dr. Murphy's name, and we are asking you to consider adding Mr. Keever to the, as a signature in, for me, for the State Department of Education in my...
Any questions? Discussion? Okay, moving on to item 6.4, amend the FY 2022 budget calendar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ewing is going to mention a couple of changes in the budget calendar tonight for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This agenda item before you this evening is to amend the fiscal year 22 budget calendar. The proposed revision is to change from having public hearings on October 20th, November 17th, and January 19th to having public comments specifically for the capital improvement plan in October and November, and public comments on the operating budget in January. This proposed revision is due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the COVID-19 pandemic, as seating is limited in Room 300. Our attorney has advised that state code requires that we hold at least one public hearing, which will be held in March. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments for Ms. Ewing?
So just to confirm, this does not reduce the number of opportunities that citizens have to comment on either the CIP or the operating budget?
Ama.
Right, hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Item 7.1, approval of minutes from August 18th and September 1st, and item 7.2, personnel action, and item 7.3, approved release from compulsory attendance case dash R2101, and 7.4, resolution R-17-20 bullying prevention month, which is in October. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I...
I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
For a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just would like to thank staff for providing the bullying, the bullying prevention month activities. I always appreciate knowing what we're doing in response to these resolutions. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to our action items. 8.1, financial report and monthly bills and payroll for August 2020.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ewing is here to present the financial report and a change in the end-of-year spending plan.
I believe that you need to have a motion for an action item before you have a discussion.
Oh, hello. Did I skip? There are motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the financial report, monthly bills and payroll for the month ended August 31st, 2020.
Second. Thank you. Now, discussion?
I think you may have a discussion.
Thank you for the point of order. Comments or questions for Ms. Ewing?
I have any formal presentation, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Is there, you don't have anything in particular you'd like to point out, or it seems pretty...
No, I haven't updated the revenue projection. I'm waiting for our fall enrollment to be finalized in September, so I will provide an updated projection and information.
So next month might be a little bit more interesting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Young?
I was just looking at the revenue type. Are these current? Trying to understand. One of the things I've asked for is how things are going locally, and so I'm looking at this revenue type. Does this answer my question?
Which page are you looking at?
I'm on page one at the bottom, where it says revenue type, then it has fiscal year 2021 budget projected, and those figures. Because, I mean, one of the concerns that I have is whether or not the local revenue going to be, because we're going into a planning for next year budget season, and, I mean, are we on target as far as income coming in?
At this point in time, yes, we are on target to receive the budgeted funds from the localities. I have not received any other information from them indicating that there is a concern at this point in time.
Thank you. Ms. Ewing, could you just explain, too, that the county had, leaves their information about revenue in arrears? So was it two months behind?
Sales tax information, sales tax is two months behind. So the revenue received, for example, in the month of August is actually for sales that occurred June.
Any additional questions about financials? So we have a motion and a second. We've discussed it. Hearing no additional discussion. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item 8.2, is there a motion to, over the preliminary financial report and year-end spending plan for June 2020?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the preliminary financial report and year-end spending plan for the year ended June 30, 2020.
Second?
Second.
Question?
Ms. Ewing, have there been any changes since the last week, last meeting?
Yes, on the year-end spending plan, we have added an item after the discussion at the last board meeting. Added an item for childcare assistance for approximately $100,000. And it's based on the model established by James City County. The funding would afford employees the opportunity to apply for $50 per week in childcare assistance for our operating under Path One, Two, or Three.
And so that, that, just to make sure that we're clear here, that, that mimics what the, what the county is providing for county employees? It's the same criteria for, to qualify for it, and...
Yes, sir.
And, and as I look at this, it appears that we're, that we're returning to the city and the county, how much money again?
In total, it is approximately $5.7 million. They have already allocated $2 million of that in support of our current year operating budget, so that would leave approximately $3.7 million. If our spending plan is approved, which totals approximately $850,000, then the localities would then keep $2.9 million.
So we, so we're, as budgeted, we're returning $2.9 million to, actually, I guess it would be $2.7 to the county and 290 to the city, or...
Roughly.
Did I do my 10% number right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
I think it's just, I think that's, shows good, good management of funds and understanding the position that all of the, all of the government, all of our funding partners are in at the moment to, to be, to be responsible that way. So thank you, thank you, and all of the administration for the good work in achieving those numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Dowell?
Yeah, thank you. Just one question on that childcare option.
Yeah, thank you. Just one question on that childcare option. Dr. Heron, when would that $50 per week be made available to staff?
It will be made available if it is approved by our funding partners, and then we will be able to start publicizing and allowing staff to apply for it. So it's most likely to be in the second nine weeks.
Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you. That actually segues nicely into my question, because right now, WJCC has partnered with the county for the first nine weeks, but for the second nine weeks, because the structure, we might be in a different path at that point. I assume the structure of the childcare needs might be different. So, could you talk a little bit, I mean, some teachers are, have a waiver to bring their students with them, which would no longer be allowed once, if we're in path two. So could you just talk a little bit about how staff's, staff needs might shift if we shift paths and why, therefore, it is, there will be a need for this program as opposed to what currently exists in these first?
So currently, we do have a partnership, which we, which is wonderful, with the Parks and Rec, where we're offering our employees childcare for $60 a week, which is a $50 reduction from their normal Parks and Rec program. It's a nine-week program. We don't know if it'll continue into the second nine weeks or not. A small number are using that opportunity right now. There's over about 190 staff using the opportunity to use a waiver to bring their children to the classroom right now. And once we have students, once they're teaching students physically in the classroom, that opportunity will go away, and therefore, there will be a greater need for childcare as we move into in-person learning two days a week. In the original survey, sent to staff at the beginning of the summer, there were 252 people who requested or said they would be interested or need a childcare option. Only 60 went through the formal process through Department of Human Resources to apply for an accommodation or a consideration based on childcare. So really, the numbers suggest the need is great. We just don't know how much it will be used, but we thought it was appropriate following board input to allow for this opportunity to our staff, just like the county staff.
Okay. And then also, just my perennial question about, if you could please keep us abreast on the approval process once we make this request tonight of the localities, if you could keep us abreast on their calendar when it goes to their, for their consideration, so we can monitor that. And then I'd like to also follow up on what Mr. Kelly said about just congratulating you and thanking you for your fiscal management and really saving the taxpayers money in a really difficult time. But I just, you know, I want to be clear, you know, I asked this at the last meeting, if we could save that much money, do we really need that much money? And I think you answered that question beautifully about what, what elements went into saving those dollars. But likewise, we have, you all have, and this board approved, setting aside a contingency fund. And so for, for someone who might say, well, why do you need that $850,000? Couldn't you use that $900,000 you have set aside? Could you just respond to that and explain why, why that's, why we're asking for this money? Because we still need that 900,000. If you could just speak to that, please.
Ms. Ewing, you want to take that one?
Sure. So it's really early in the school year to start allocating funds out of our contingency account. We don't know if there could be changes in our revenue or unexpected expenditures, so we feel that it's best, because these items are one-time expenditures, that it is appropriate to request through the spending plan, as we don't have an identified source of funding for those items.
Thank you very much. And I just want to add that this situation has really highlighted that in order to thrive, we must equip our community with the skills to respond and adapt and innovate. And nothing furthers that really more than quality public education. So I know we're all burdened right now with falloff in tax revenues coupled by increased expenses, so it's really difficult on everybody to operate safely in this COVID world. But with that in mind, I just don't think we can afford to be short-sighted and cut education and not, not give the students what we need. So I do hope that our funders look upon this request favorably, and I do support it. And I appreciate the addition of the childcare. I think it sends a message that this board cares about what teachers are going through. Mr. Kelly spoke eloquently about the additional work that teachers and all administrators, I keep saying teachers, but it's everybody, are going through to make sure that our kids get a quality education. And so I think it's the least we can do to ask for that. So thank you for, for considering it.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, just a couple of follow-ups there. One of the things of the contingency, a big, a large part of our savings, not obviously not all of it, last year was fuel costs, which were a lot less than what we thought. We don't know what those are going to look like. So that's one of the things that you would, you would hold that contingency out on. So to the childcare, so right now, there's a county program that's normally 110 that our teachers can take advantage of for 60.
Correct, sir.
So with the $50, with the $50, those teachers that are doing that county program would still be, will be paying the 60. They wouldn't pay 10 with the?
Correct. They would still pay 60 because that's, they've already had a $50 reduction on a program that's offered 110 by the county. So we feel that the $50 that we're asking for now would be for other options for childcare that families may be paying right now.
Right. So this would be beyond the county program, and be able to, the teachers could, would apply to use that for whatever childcare paradigm that they're working at right now.
Yes, sir. And also, we don't know if the program will continue into the second nine weeks, which is when our need for childcare will actually grow.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions?
This is just so that our listening public knows that typically, what do we give back? Typically, it's more like 1 million, right, or a little slightly less than that?
Correct.
And so I just want everyone to know that this 3 million is really through, like you had said earlier, through a lot of cost savings and hard work on our part to give this money back. So I just want people to know this is not a typical situation for the end of the year.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Additional comments? I would just like to concur with all my colleagues. I agree with the year-end spending, and I think that our division staff have worked really hard to be responsible and respectful of what the community has, has given our division, and, but has also identified needs that are, that are very real. And so, thank you for that. So we have a motion and a second. We've discussed it. Serza?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ombi?
Aye.
Item eight point three, revise and rename policy JBCC sexual harassment complaint policy to JBCC EBCC title nine policy. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we revise and rename policy JBCC sexual harassment complaint policy to policy JBCC slash JBCC titled nine policy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item eight point four, appointment of superintendent's designee to serve through 2020. Is there a motion?
I move that we appoint Mr. Daniel Kever to be superintendent's designee to attend meetings of the school board in the absence or inability of the superintendent through 2020.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item eight point five, authorization for signature in the absence of the superintendent. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize Mr. Daniel Kever, chief operating officer, to sign State Department of Education documents in the absence of the superintendent through August 15th, 2021.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. We were just approving through the end of 2020, but then this motion goes through 2021, or through halfway through 2021. It's just a general question, like?
I think it's to do with state reporting. It's just a date we use every year for signatures on state documents and the end of the year budget and things like that. Ms. Ewing signs off on that, and she needs that extra time period.
Okay. So next January, we'll be signing it again, the previous one. Okay.
Absolutely.
Any additional questions?
Is there any reason we can't line those dates up?
Oh, probably not. We probably could.
It would be lined up.
The end dates? Come to the microphone.
My assumption would be you previously approved it for the actual school year, and because of a change in staff, you've had to redo it again. But I think after this one little gap, it'll be in the, in the right place moving forward.
Okay. But to Ms. Hummel's point, is there any reason we couldn't, we couldn't have done the signature through August 15th, 2021? We've already voted on it now, or moved on?
We already voted on it.
We'll fix that, we'll fix that later.
I want to revisit my tenure, I guess, because you, gives you an out.
That's right.
So now we're going to do it at the end of this year, not the end of the school year?
Any additional comments? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Next, item eight point six, is our motion to amend the FY 2022 budget calendar.
Madam Chair, I move to amend the fiscal year 2022 budget calendar to change the public hearings scheduled for October 20, 2020, and November 17, 2020, and January 19, 2021 to public comments.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to board matters, item 9.1. I'll start with Mr. Dowell.
Madam Chair, I don't have any comments this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to congratulate everybody on the first week and a half of school, particularly teachers and the administrators. And I just want a special shout-out to high school counselors who, through ad drop, I'm, I can't imagine what they've been, you know, working on since there was a shift from semester to year-long, and then everyone's adjustment to that as they learn their schedule. So anyway, shout-out to them. And then also, I just wanted to thank the food bank. Every year, they have a gathering for officials down at their headquarters in Hampton to pack backpacks for kids. And ultimately, those backpacks come up here weekly for our neediest children so that they have food over the weekend. So I just wanted to thank them for being such a good partner. And anyway, all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Cook, Ms. Young?
Yes, I was at Delegate Batten's office last night, and she asked me about the yellow flashing lights at the school sites. I just wanted to let the community know that if there are yellow flashing lights at schools, it's because school is in session for some of our students. Tonight, we heard that there's 185 students at various sites with disabilities that are back at school. And so please do not ignore those, because if the policeman is there, he is going to stop you and give you a nice little ticket, which I don't know how much it costs, and I don't want to find out. So if the lights are flashing, please stop. And, because students are in attendance, and there are school buses that are running. Secondly, I had received information from a parent that had missed the cutoff date for virtual, the Virtual Academy here in Williamsburg, and that has gone on up all the way to the State Department of Education. And Virginia, Virtual Virginia is also closed, as are most of our private schools in the area, have a waiting list. But I was able to find out today that, that for Virtual Virginia, that there's going to be an expanded enrollment program. But there is a fee for those classes, and it's based on the Williamsburg James City County Local Composite Index. And so if you're interested in that, you need, you need to contact your local school counselor here, who may or may not have information on that, but they can find it, I believe, because there will be a fee for that. But right now, our Virtual Academy is, is closed, and school is being operated under virtual learning. So it's just for the community's interest. And I guess, finally, I just want to thank our, our teaching staff, and along with Mr. Kelly, because he, his wife is a teacher. I'm very concerned about the workload for our teachers, because it's a lot of extra work, and it's a huge learning curve also. So I want to thank them, and thank all of the hard work that has been done by the school division to get prepared for this, and, and just thank you, and just hang in there and know that we support you. So, thank you.
Ms. Young, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very pleased to hear that. We continue to follow the Virginia Department of Health guidelines as we move from one phase to another. And everybody needs to realize that if everybody behaves themselves and does what we're all supposed to be doing, we will be able to move to phase two. So it's, it's everybody's responsibility. It's not, it's not the school, just the school system, teachers, administrators. It's also parents. It's, it's just people out in the public that it's really important to do your social distancing, wash your hands, and wear a mask, so that we can get back normal, whatever normal ultimately will be. I was amazed, and just really gratified to hear that operations is bringing meals right out to the neighborhoods. I, that's just, that's incredible. I, I can't say enough the folks that are helping that and making that happen. Kudos to technology. I know we had a couple of glitches, but my golly, they got on top of those so fast and, and made the changes and, and did it calmly, I would assume. I didn't hear any yelling or screaming, but geez, it was really something. And, and I always appreciate the finance, budget updates, as well, where we are, where we're going. And I think it is important to point out that we are turning back to the county a significant amount of savings that I know staff spent hundreds of hours trying to figure that all out, and I don't want people to forget about that. And then, of course, there's the instructional aspect of our, of our school. And I echo Mr. Kelly and, and others who recognize the incredible challenge that our teachers have, and they're meeting the challenge. And I know they're just as tired at the end of the day as they would be if they were in their own classroom with their own kids. It is not easy, taking it from somebody who did it for a couple of years. Teaching online does require, I think, sometimes it requires more, more preparation, more work, because you need to make the instruction interesting and responsive to students, and, and that's a challenge if you're doing it online. It certainly is. And I always like to end with this last, these last three words for, not so much for us, but for those listening, watching, and, and the general public. We, well, I know we're going to get through this, but it is very important to try to stay patient, be responsible, do the things that we need to do, and please, respect those who are doing that around you. It's hard not to think that if we had been really diligent back in March or April, and just said for just said for 30 days, we are shutting ourselves down, we're all going to wear masks, we're all going to do this, and we're all going to do that, we might be looking at a total ... As somebody says, it is what it is, and we're going to move forward, but I just can't express enough gratitude to everybody that's connected with the school system.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Sure. Jumping off a couple of what some of my colleagues have said, from Mrs. Young, just like the yellow flashing lights in front of schools, if a school bus has its stop arm out, just like it was when Henry Ford was a boy, you have to stop. So, as school buses are out there transporting some kids to school, and as we get more of them out there, just remember that the stop arms are, and there might be a camera on them this year, who knows? As Dr. Beers said about teachers working incredibly hard and just as tired at the end of the day, my concern, Dr. Beers, is the end of the day may be very close to the beginning of the next one. And so...
It's so true.
We need to, we need to, we need to keep that in mind and, you know, unburden our teachers as much as possible and give them all the help that they can have. As far as, you know, parents and teachers, understanding patience, understand that, you know, the teachers are doing the best that they can. They may not be perfect, but you got to give them a little bit of a break there and understand that they're doing, they're doing the best they can, and they're doing a great job. As is, I have to say, all the members of our administration. We talked about the IT folks and the challenges that they've, they have met. This school year has just been incredible. The challenges our teachers and our administrators and the buildings are meeting is just incredible. And so, I think we should all just be grateful and understanding of the work that they're all doing. Citizen comments tonight, talking about opening schools, and I totally understand the family difficulties associated with that. I totally understand the challenges. I know, you know, that there are, I guess there is a little bit of debate now about the health, whether we should be back or we shouldn't be back, but, you know, this is one of those things that if we're a little bit later than others, I'm okay with that. As we move into Path 2, it's only going to unburden you a little bit. You know, we need to, we need to do, as Dr. Beers and others have talked about, do what we need to do as a community and make sure we continue on the path that we're on so that we can get to Path 3 and Path 4 as soon as possible, because that's where we need to be. We need to be with the kids in school and teachers in school and everybody healthy and learning. So, just want to thank all the, thank all the members of the community and the administration, and it's just a challenging time, but challenge also presents opportunity too, so...
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
Yes, I'm not going to speak for more than a minute, Mr. Kelly, because everyone has already said great things. I would like to stress that I think all of us understand, in addition to the Herculean efforts that our teachers and our staff members have made, equally, Herculean efforts have been made by our parents and our children in the community. And I think of all of them every single day going forward with all of the challenges that they have in their personal lives, with their children, understanding that they need to be resilient and patient, and, I guess, also empathetic to what the teachers are going through. It's just a very challenging time for everyone and for all of us to just give everyone else a tiny bit of a break and a tiny bit of grace as we, as we approach the next, the next month or so.
Ms. Hummel, I agree with all of my colleagues. I think our new mantra should be, we are WJCC and we are like Gumby. So, I know for my own boys, this week, there were some challenges, and there were some IT issues, and those were met swiftly and always good-natured, and I think with every challenge does come opportunities. And so, while our students are learning from home, I think they're going to be very tech-savvy, and they're going to know a lot about Zoom meetings. And so, in the long run, I think there's an opportunity to learn some new strategies, and that will help them as they move down the road. So I just, again, appreciate all of the work our staff have done. We built from scratch a virtual academy and got that up and running, along with moving through our paths. Really, in just the last two weeks, we've already started moving into Path 2. So, appreciate that, and would echo what my colleague said, we definitely need to just grace and patience. So with that, moving on to upcoming events. All-Stake Committee is meeting on the 24th, here in the annex at 8:00. And upcoming meetings, we've got closed session on October 6 here at 6...
Madam Chair, there's a CAC meeting.
Yes, I was going to add that.
Thursday.
Yes.
Sorry, yeah, sorry.
Thank you. What I was going to ask too, if we have an update, I asked about this last time, about our student advisory committee and 21st Century, like have we heard, are they meeting? But CAC is meeting this Thursday.
Thursday, yes, and...
It's via Zoom.
And if he's able, Mr. Dowell is going to be joining us, and then, so heads up, I'll be doing the rounds to invite all of you to future ones, as your schedules allow.
Thank you. That is via Zoom.
Is the policy meeting going to be Zoom or in person?
It's here in the annex, is that correct, Ms. Sarza?
Sorry, what?
Want it to be Zoom or for the policy meeting? Or do you want to meet in person?
I don't, I don't, then, either way, doesn't bother me.
Okay, that's fine.
Whichever.
No, I'm fine, okay.
Okay, so moving back to meeting schedules, so our next board meeting, closed session, is on the 6th of October here in the annex, followed by work session at 6:30, and then closed session October 20th in the annex, followed by public comments on the CIP at 6:30, and those will be phoned in, and then a regular meeting following that. Is there additional comments? Thoughts? This meeting is adjourned.